Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of July the 3rd, 2023. Councilmember Go-4th is unable to attend tonight, and she is excused, but Vice Mayor Haredia and Councilmember Spilsbury are both attending this meeting via Zoom, and all other council members are present. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is tonight's council meeting agenda, and also the July 10th meeting. So let's go through tonight's agenda first. Counsel, I know we just talked about this a day or two ago, but any additional information anyone would like on tonight's agenda? Is that a yes? Okay. Ms. Spilsbury or Mr. Haredia, any questions?
I'm good.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe moving to the July 10th meeting. Counsel, Mr. Butler, anything about that? We do have a change to that agenda, do we not?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, we are removing items 7A through 7C, all dealing with the legacy Gateway Hotels. That will be brought back at a future time as we continue to work with the developer on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, other, yes?
Item 4D, I know we have an item on the agenda for awarding the construction contract. If it's not too late, I would like to make a recommendation or suggestion, and looking at, I looked at the floor plan that we had for that, is someone from Economic Development here? Oh, Jay's here, okay. Hi, Jay.
Hello.
So it is a little bit of an afterthought, I know a few weeks ago you made the presentation as far as the floor plan, and thinking about the workforce development area on the bottom floor, on the basement floor. We have the podcast studio, and I'd like to make a suggestion that we also look at, maybe can we do any music recording or somehow outfit that room that could also do that? There are aspirations of doing an entrepreneurial art scene around film and music, maybe coming up for our downtown, and I didn't know if it would be possible to also have that ability in that area to do like some music recording or on a simplistic manner. I don't know what's required, and it's just a thought over the weekend.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, yes, I think that can be incorporated, and we can certainly incorporate some recording AV equipment to the podcast room, certainly, and perhaps even another area in that downstairs layout as well.
That'd be wonderful. I know with the music festival, we're wanting to really grow that and be an entrepreneurial center for music, and I think that would really help to have that addendum in our workforce development area.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, under other agenda items for the July 10th meeting? Mr. Summers.
Mr. Butler, item 6C, Gateway Interchange Phase III. The developer's been working on this project for quite some time, but we have, there's a concern. The water wastewater infrastructure has a fairly long route, has to connect Warner and Sossamith, memory serves, so that's quite a distance. The issue that we're having is that they are willing to invest tens of millions of dollars in fronting that infrastructure, but other, they got private development agreements with most property owners, but not all of them, so there's a potential that those private property owners could then hook into the system and not pay their fair share of that infrastructure cost. That doesn't seem fair. So what can we do? Can we find either a shorter route for the water wastewater line that would work, or make amendments to the code to make sure that there's buy-in from others?
Right, and Mayor, Councilmember Summers, I'm sure you've all heard from developers or property owners during your time on council about this dilemma, right? When they're looking to develop their property ahead of the infrastructure and some of the burdens that poses on them as far as running that infrastructure, and then whether they have cooperative property owners along the way who choose to work with them on some form of reimbursement. So Mr. Brady's heard that, he's, I know several of you have raised this, and he's heard from developers as well about this dilemma, and so what he's done is ask Natalie Lewis and Mark Hirschberg to take a look at this issue, look at what other cities are doing, are there other industry best practices that we should be incorporating in Mesa to help situations like you just described? And so they're going to scrub this down, like I said, look at what other cities are doing and report back to council on whether there's any changes that we should, updates to our policies and procedures to bring us more in line.
Yeah, it would be, the way it's set up right now would be akin to some folks who are in the county, they're coming into the city, and they'll make a water connection for their home, and then having people tap into that without having to pay their fair share, that's just not, that's just not fair. So I'm encouraged that that's moving forward, and we'll have a solution hopefully soon, or at least we'll know what it'll be by the end of the council break.
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, absolutely, they'll be working on this as quickly as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions on our July 10th agenda? Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Haredia, are you good?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you. Julie, I saw you nodding no, so thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 2A, is a presentation on the use and sale of fireworks and enforcement efforts. Timely topic, isn't it?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Deputy Chief Shawn Alexander, I'm the Fire Marshal, and with me tonight we have Commander Jeffrey Cutler from Mesa PD. So this slide is just a brief overview of the statutes, the state laws. This is a presentation that we've done in the past, there's nothing really new here. There are legal fireworks that are overseen by fire prevention, and those are sold generally through our permitted tents. And then we have our illegal fireworks, which is a big significant portion of our fireworks challenges on the 4th of July and New Year's Eve. We have been, in fire prevention, we have, for this year, we have 23 permitted tents that have been approved and inspected by fire inspectors, and we've found one or two that had some illegal fireworks in there, we cleared those out. We've confirmed, and along with PD, they've done drop-by inspections of these to ensure that what is being sold at the permitted legal tents is all legal. This slide is, I'm sure you've seen it before, it's just a very brief overview of what is legal and what is not. Essentially, if it goes into the air, or if it has a loud report, a loud bang, it's This slide shows the dates and times that consumer fireworks are permitted, and this is, city code has adopted the state law, this is almost word for word right out of the state law. We have a permitted use period coming up, obviously, with the holiday, and on the evening of July 4th, along with New Year's Eve, the normal hours that are permitted is extended by two hours until 1:00 AM. Normally, for the rest of the year, it's, it can only go until 11:00 PM.
Mayor, Council, if I could, because some people, when you don't see this, it can go back to the colored, the green yellow, so the yellow is allowed during those days and those hours. That's what that's saying. The red is never legal, and so that's what that's saying the next slide, if you go forward to the next slide. So just so for people that are trying to look at the words and match the colors and the chart, I like the chart, actually, I'm visual, so I like that chart, and putting it into the, the yellow's legal during certain hours.
I'm not familiar with the holiday Diwali, is that not a fixed, is that tied to the lunar calendar or something? Is there a reason that we don't have days attached to that?
It is. Mr. Mayor, that was recently added to the state law, it is a Hindu holiday, generally observed towards the mid to late October period. It's a multi-day holiday, but the fireworks are only allowed on the second and third day of the overall holiday.
Yes, Ms. Duff?
So, looking at the chart, I like the colors, is this similar with other surrounding cities? Are they, you know, as far as what they legal? So this is deemed by the state what is legal, not legal?
That is correct.
By the state, so it is uniform throughout the valley and throughout the state?
Yes, we've adopted state code, and we've made no changes to it.
Okay, I just wanted, thank you.
So just to reiterate what we, I think the people in this room know, but tomorrow our email will be full of complaints about tonight's, well, tomorrow night's activities, and our unfortunate answer is that the cities are preempted by the state legislature. We have little or no control over what are legal and illegal fireworks, and I think we've just updated our ordinance to reflect the changes that the state made, and that's what you're presenting right now, right?
Yes, sir, this is essentially the same presentation that we've given in previous periods of authorized use. The state law has not been updated recently, other than to include the Diwali holiday.
Okay.
The city code was updated last year to include, basically copy, a significant portion of the state law into the Title VI Criminal Code, so it now resides in both the fire code and also for enforcement efforts in the criminal code.
Great, thank you.
So this slide essentially talks about the enforcement efforts that both Mesa Fire Prevention and the Police Department are taking. We have done all of this to this point, and as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we have visited every permitted point of sale and ensured that they are only selling legal fireworks. The challenges that we have seen the last few years in the city are not coming, in my opinion, from the legal sales, they are coming in from out of state, they are coming in through a whole host of different areas, and those are areas that we can't regulate because we're not issuing permits for those. Mesa Police has, fire prevention and the community action officers, we have been meeting the last few, the last month to prepare for this season, and the community action officers actually came up with what I feel is a pretty novel attempt to, at crime prevention efforts, but they've essentially adopted or put into place a reporting line, an email, where residents can notify the Police Department about regular offenders for illegal fireworks, and that can be done unanimously. When those referrals are made, the community action officers are delivering a flyer to the residents that essentially informs them of the requirements, and then lets them know that they've been, that the Police Department and Fire Department have been notified about their actions. For the, I believe it's the top 50 offenders, they were actually delivering those in person to remind individuals of the consequences of setting off illegal fireworks. I think we'll have much more effective mitigation efforts through education on this than we will through enforcement. I think we can have a bigger outreach that way, but Commander Cutler, we'll also, I'll give them an opportunity to talk about the enforcement efforts.
Mayor, Council, yeah, the flyer was, we targeted that to the 50 largest calls for service over the past few years, whose offenders have been, to get that out to them, and, sorry. We also focused our efforts on the tip line, too, so people have called information in that says somebody might have illegal fireworks, or has in the past had legal fireworks, so we've targeted those where our community action officers will go out and actually hand-deliver that to them, so kind of give them the education and the kind of the warning that this is the law, and this is what we're going to be enforcing. And of course, if we see possession of illegal fireworks, we're seizing that and citing. So prior to tomorrow night, we've been focusing on education and prevention through those efforts, through making contacts with people, and then going into the 4th of July tomorrow, we're going to be focusing mainly on enforcement. We have our street crimes units, our community action officers are going to be available all night long to go out and look for aerial fireworks, illegal fireworks, if we find them, we will be citing and seizing fireworks, and the patrol officers, when they're not on call service, will also be doing the exact same thing. So that's going to be our efforts for tomorrow night.
Ms. Duff?
So tomorrow, we're going to have a lot of people who want to alert you about illegal fireworks in their neighborhood. What is the best course of action? Is it this email, or is it the non-emergency number, or what is the course of action for these?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, of course, they can use that tip email line, if it's in progress, they see it going on, they can always use the non-emergency line to put a call for service in for our officers to respond. Our street crimes units will also hear that information, and if they need to see it deemed necessary, they'll go over there to make contact with them, so it's either patrol or our plainclothes officers.
So the fireworks@mesaz.gov is the tip line to send?
Yeah. Of course, if they see it in progress, they can just dial the non-emergency number and we'll respond.
Okay, okay. All right. So the city link isn't an option? It would be best just to do the email?
Yes.
Or the non-emergency? Okay, thank you.
And with that, we will get a lot at one time, we're going to have, you know, that typically happens, we get a bunch of calls at one moment, and so we obviously have to prioritize that with who we can actually make contact with, but we'll work our best to get through those calls for service.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Sometimes I'm just speechless at the amount of fireworks, illegal fireworks that go off in our community, especially, I think all of our neighborhoods are affected by it, and I just, I saw on the news this morning, Avondale is having zero tolerance in their enforcement team for illegal fireworks, and I hope that, you know, I don't want that to happen, but I think we need to send the message to illegal fireworks users, and I know last year there was undercover efforts done and seized a lot of fireworks, and that was important, is sending the message to those that buy illegal fireworks and then try to sell them, either from their homes or from convenience stores, as you know. I just think that it's still important that education is a key, but there are some that continue to disregard that, and they can not only harm themselves, but others, there has been structured fires in my district caused specifically by fireworks, and people have lost their homes, and it's, it's just terrible that all this has to happen, but I just applaud patrol and others going out, our CAOs and undercover street, you know, crime gang going out and enforcing it, it's necessary. So I don't know what else to say, other than I hope at some point we get a handle on it, and I don't know how it's going to happen, but it's going to come gradually. So, thank you for your efforts, and especially patrol going out, I know that they're busy this time, during this time of season, and, you know, I hope they can work till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, because that's what happens around my neighborhood, unfortunately. How about yours, Mayor?
I got stories I can tell, for sure. This is, I'm impressed with the enforcement, the kind of the preemptive enforcement that you've done, that's great, because I think, I mean, I could take you in my neighborhood to, you know, the folks that have a tradition of illegal fireworks, and it sounds like that word is getting out, and hopefully they were in the top 50, they got a visit, you know, from a police officer or firefighter, letting them know that there's consequences, you know, to that, so I'm sure tomorrow is going to be, I recall last year, I had to drive home in between our fireworks display and, as I drove back, you know, for the downtown, well, number one, we got a world-class, wonderful, 100% legal fireworks displayed tomorrow night in downtown Mesa, in and around the rendezvous area and Mesa Centennial Hall, and so invite everyone to come, you won't be disappointed at all. But as I was driving into that display last year, there was not a neighborhood in town that was not, you know, didn't have this going on, so thank you for your efforts, you know, trying to curb this, it is, this is dangerous, you know, people will be seriously injured, and animals will be terrorized, and I mean, there's some pretty significant consequences that come from this, so I joined in the choir, saying, please enjoy fireworks responsibly, please go to a professional show, and we'd invite you to come to the free fireworks display that will be in downtown Mesa tomorrow night. Gentlemen, did you have anything more to your presentation?
Yeah, there was one more thing.
Yeah. Well, penalties, there you go, that'll get our attention.
Okay, so again, these were just mirrored in the criminal code this last year for the city of Mesa, and it just describes that this is a misdemeanor for certain circumstances, as well as a fine, and this is what the police officers will be using to, for enforcement purposes. We do, we will see some fireworks tomorrow night, I'm certain of it, but to answer your comment, Councilmember Freeman, this is a significant safety issue, every season, we see a significant increase in calls during this time, and these fireworks will undoubtedly land on someone's rooftop or in someone's yard. Another area that can be focused on is proper disposal and making sure that these are, any legal fireworks that are used are soaked in water before being placed in the trash, that's also a significant number of calls for service, and it will be a very busy night for both the Police and the Fire Department.
Ms. Duff?
I know Avondale, I was watching on the news this morning, they're doing a zero tolerance, no warnings. Are we in that same position, or?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we are not issuing warnings, we're doing citations this year.
So zero tolerance?
If you're in violation of the statute, we will citing you.
You're getting a misdemeanor, minimum $1,000, no second chances.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Spilsbury, you look like you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, I just had a question, so the, they're still, do they still have to be caught in the act?
Well, for the aerial displays, yes, we have to catch somebody in the act of shooting one off, however, if they're in possession of it, it's still also a crime, so if we don't catch them in the act, or they have possession of them, we'll also seize those in sight.
Oh, okay, that's good to know, so yeah, I think that's important to know, and then I do think that as we start to do some enforcement, it will make a big difference, and word will spread through these neighborhoods, like, oh, the police are actually doing something now, so I really, really appreciate the enforcement efforts, and I think it's important to just reiterate as many times as we can that the fireworks tomorrow can only go till 1:00 AM, anything after 1:00 AM, you're going to get fined, and that nothing can shoot in the air, nothing, right? Anything that goes aerial is illegal. I think those two things need to just be stressed as much as we can to anyone we talk to.
That is correct, Councilmember. The, in addition to the celebration of freedom that the mayor was discussing, the only other authorized legal shoot will be out at Eastmark, but those will be done and over with long before the 1:00 hour.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, a great reminder, very timely, and again, we encourage folks in the community, if you do see or hear illegal activity, please let the Mesa Police and Fire Department know, and we'll respond accordingly, and hopefully people will find legal and appropriate ways to celebrate the Fourth with us tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 2B on our agenda for this meeting is to take action on board appointments, is there a motion to that effect, to approve those appointments? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Ms. Duff. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, I heard both Ms. Spilsbury and Vice Mayor Haredia say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item 3 on our agenda is to acknowledge the receipt of minutes, is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Mr. Freeman, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Both Councilmembers Spilsbury and Vice Mayor Haredia voted aye, are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended, council members, anything you'd like to share with us? Yes, Ms. Spilsbury?
I'll just make one announcement, in District 2, this Saturday is our general plan meeting, it's from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Jefferson Rec Center, so if you have any ideas, feedback, opinions about transportation, transit, or the balanced housing master plan, we'd love to have you come and give us all of your information that you'd like us to know to help plan our city.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
And thank you for that mention, Councilmember Spilsbury, I would like to also chime in on that, the District 4 General Plan Urban Lab Workshop is this Saturday, the 8th, at 6:00 PM at the Charles K. Luster Community Room, which is, I believe it's 940 North Mesa Drive, it's a very interactive thing, so it's not just listening, so please come out, shape our future, and we'll have a great time. I really appreciate the participation, shaping our 2050 plan, thank you.
Thank you. And these meetings will be held in each of the districts, so if you don't live in one of these council members' districts, please stay tuned, and please come out and participate when that happens. As far as, oh, I, Mr. Summers, we had a great tour of Textron out in District 6, that was an amazing facility with, you know, Cessna and some wonderful brands, beautiful facility, so lots of good jobs at that location.
Excellent connection with our education system.
That's right.
And hiring veterans, too, to program.
Right. Yeah, if you've driven by the Textron building on the campus of the Gateway Airport, it's an amazing facility. Also, I had the privilege on Friday of speaking at the 50th anniversary of the Mesa West Rotary Club. A lot of wonderful service has been provided over the years by the Mesa West Rotary Club, so we're grateful for their contribution to our community. Mr. Butler, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Mayor, I know you and council will be disappointed, but you don't have to see all of our smiling faces on Thursday morning, study session is canceled this coming Thursday, and so we will see you back again here next Monday at 5:15 for our final council meeting before the summer break. And then, Mayor, just to piggyback on what you were saying about the district, general plan meeting's coming up, I know District 1, in addition to District 2 and 4, that the council members have spoke to, District 1 is Wednesday, July 12th, at the St. Luke Lutheran Church, so that's Wednesday, July 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at St. Luke Lutheran Church. And with that, I was supposed to also give another promo, but I think council's done a great job of talking about our free, world-class, completely legal fireworks display that's occurring tomorrow night as part of the celebration of freedom, so that starts at 6:00 o'clock at Convention Center area, and again, it's free, so please bring your families and come out and enjoy this safe, fun environment in downtown Mesa.
Great. Yeah, so the facilities kick off at 6:00, but at 5:00 in the Convention Center, we will be having, hosting a naturalization service, so if you haven't seen one of these, I encourage everyone to attend, we'll have probably 50 or 80, you know, brand-new Americans being sworn in by a federal judge, there's a wonderful, you know, this is, we're hosting a federal convening for that purpose, but we'll get to participate in that program, and that, if you haven't seen that, that is really something not to be missed, and then...
Mayor, quick question on that, sorry, it's hard to jump in when I'm on the screen, but where is parking for that? I was thinking about, because everything's kind of shut down, so where are people supposed to park it for that ceremony?
Same parking as for the rest of the event, so it's really a lot of, City Plaza, the Mesa Library, any of the Peppers, well, Pepper Street Garage, the Centennial Way Garage, any of the, there'll be a lot in the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown parks, so, yeah, parking is free, but you got to find.
I think just north of the Delta Hotel parking there, there's parking spaces there.
Library, any of the, the Pepper, well, Pepper Street Garage, the Centennial Way Garage, any of the, there'll be a lot in the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown parks. So, yeah, parking is free, but you gotta find.
I think just north of the Delta Hotel parking there, there's parking spaces there.
Oh, yeah, in and around the Delta, yeah, oh, right. There's a great parking lot just north of the Delta Hotel, isn't there, Mr. Freeman? Yeah. So, yeah, you might have to walk a little bit. So that's probably a good reason to come a little early, to enjoy the naturalization ceremony or some of the events, you know, prior to the 9:00 PM fireworks display.
It'll be 110 degrees, so be sure to act ready.
But there are some activities that are indoors.
Right.
So it's not everything is outdoors, so, you know.
If you want to get wet, you can do that as well.
Right. There'll be a lot of hydration. There'll be a lot of water for kids to jump into and roll around in. Inside the Convention Center, in addition to the naturalization ceremony, there's a lot of very patriotic displays honoring servicemen that have lost their lives. There'll be a lot of reenactments, you know, out on the, the display areas in front of the buildings. So a lot of food, a lot of food vendors. It really is very much a carnival environment, lots of fun. And again, it's, yeah, if you purchase food, I'm sure there, there's charges associated with that, but other than that, the, the event is entirely free. And we usually get very large crowds. So in this post-COVID environment, I'm suspecting we'll have, we'll be back up to, to a big crowd. So coming a little bit early is not a bad idea. Carpooling is not a bad idea. Maybe taking the light rail would be a great idea.
I just wanted to add one thing. On the District 4, tomorrow's Mesa meeting on the 8th, I misspoke, it's at 640 North Mesa Drive, not 940, 640 North Mesa Drive in the Charles Luster Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else that we ought to discuss regarding future events or things we've been up to? All right, that concludes then the, Mr. Heredia, are you good? I take that as a yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene in just a minute or two upstairs.